...with the Board of Trustees for the Village of Cambridge. Roll call, please.
Trustee Rose.
Here.
Franklin.
Here.
Whitworth.
Here.
Gallars absent. Kumbir.
Here.
Schaefer Weis is absent. McNally.
Here. All right. If we can stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Lisa, what can you tell us about the status of the posting of this meeting, please?
The agenda was posted in the upper and lower levels of the Amundsen Community Center, the Cambridge Post Office, Hometown Bank, and the Village website.
Okay.
Do you want this?
No, that's this. We'll just move this closer.
Do you want us to reiterate the posting information, or are you okay?
That would be great, thank you.
Can you repeat that?
The agendas were posted in the upper and lower levels of the Amundsen Community Center, the Cambridge Post Office, Hometown Bank, and the Village website.
All right. Okay, thank you. We're going to get into public appearances. Carol, I saw you when I was walking in, there you are. Have a seat, and please introduce yourself.
Hi, I'm Carol Fatienza, the Board Secretary of the Jefferson County Tourism Council, and I'm a resident of Cambridge as well.
And I did pass out some handouts from Carol as well.
Okay. So I'm just here to give a quarterly update from last quarter. One of the most exciting things that has happened is the contract between Jefferson County and Discover Wisconsin. They went into a three-year deal where they're going to be promoting our area. And we have the second handout will show you kind of where I tried to highlight the Cambridge highlights in the program. It looks like Jefferson Speedway is in the TV episode, which will be the first year, and that's supposed to air in September. That's in the town of Oakland. And then we've got the Beer Cave that I just recently told them about that will be in their cabin podcast in the first year, and that's under History and Legends. And then Year Two is where we get into the Arts and Culture. We'll promote, you know, Cambridge Pottery, Midwest Fire Fest. And then there's an episode, there's a digital short with, which will highlight whiskey, cheeses, and beers, oh my, which they will have Dancing Goat in that episode. And Dancing Goat's doing some other stuff with them, too, so. The good news with that is that we also get the B-roll, which is like the videos we can share however we want to on your website. They'll provide that to each community that is involved. So photos and videos, which is pretty cool. As far as Jefferson County Tourism, our website's doing really well. We projected to be at 95,000 hits or page views. We're at 118,135. Cambridge consistently is at number one spot for top advertisers for page views, behind, right in front of Fireside and Lake Mills. We signed up for a new subscription to kind of keep track of the good keywords to use and how to kind of boost things on the site. Businesses and community groups can enter events through the front end of the site if they have anything, or they could just contact me to, you know, post events and things like that. We're doing weekly blogs. Social media's doing really well, too. Of course, our seasonal promotions always do well. We had the Deck the House promotion, which was a countywide house decorating for Christmas contest. And the grand prize winner from Watertown got a $25 gift certificate from Ruby Rose Gallery, from Highway Harry's, and the Watertown Chamber, and a beautiful ornament. I said we do weekly blogs. I just did one on the Camrock Fat Tire biking that just went out this weekend. We have our newsletter, which goes out to 7,400 people. It's at a 21% open rate, which I guess is really good. That's up from 16%. And I encourage you to sign up for the newsletter at enjoyjeffersoncounty.com. We're also working on the printed guide. You guys signed up for a half a spread, and I think you may have gotten, I don't know if it's a good copy or not, okay? Of the preliminary.
It's a good copy, okay.
Yeah. And then also, the town of Oakland did their whole spread, too, which is nice. We've got the lake highlighted with Lake Ripley Management District and the town of Oakland, and then we kind of focused on our biking and our, you know, downtown events and things like that for Cambridge. Ad sales are going well. We're on track with that. Oh, we're doing additional, you know, special interest articles about the arts and business travelers and dog-friendly places to go and stuff like that. It'll be interspersed throughout the guide. Once I get the, you know, draft version, I'll send that over to you, too, Lisa. But we're printing it February, and then we'll start distributing in March. Do you, by the way, do you guys have some of those brochures left from this current year? Yeah, a lot?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I'll grab those and get them out so we can get them distributed. We were awarded the Destination Marketing Grant of 4,400 for a wedding promotion that we want to do countywide. And so they're going to be doing like a webpage and then a published piece where, you know, we'll promote through our venues and through wedding, you know, those, whatever they're called, their conventions and stuff like that. The Camper Power Sports Show is at Jefferson County Fair Park, and they've invited the tourism group to have a booth fair. I sent something out to the businesses, too, because I can't attend, but if we could, you know, if any business wanted to bring their brochures and, you know, be out at the fair park, I guess it's very well-attended, and they're welcome to do that. Destination Madison, I just wanted to say thank you for that subscription. I don't know if that comes up again soon or not, but I'm sure we'll find out. But that does help our business community. They have collaboration meetings. We're able to promote things on their site, and, you know, it's just a nice collabora- collaborative thing to be involved with. Travel Wisconsin, David Spiegelberg is our local regional tourism specialist. He was at our meeting last week for Jefferson County Tourism. They launched their winter campaign. I think I provided links to that, but you could, you'll see it on TV and radio, billboards, online. They've spent more on this campaign than they have the previous six winters combined. I'm assuming it's, they've gotten some ARPA funds to do that, so that's kind of nice. They're in 12 markets. Their snow report is up. They do a lot of good PR webinars that their PR firm Turner hosts, and they also have those webinars, if you can't make it that day, you can look at them after the fact, and it's probably good for our business community, too, that I can share with them. There's hot leads that we get all the time that I keep an eye out for to see if anything, you know, fits us. There's a co-op program for advertising and PR services. They start at 400, but they go all the way up to, you know, whatever, but maybe one of these days we'll be able to take advantage of that. And they have Jem Grants offered four times a year. Those are joint effort marketing, like for events and things like that, that you, people can apply for. Travel Wisconsin, they launched a new website. There were little hiccups in the road, I guess, on that, but now it's looking good. And I need to actually go in there and make sure that all of our listings are listed correctly, and it looks good and everything. Also, David is going to send us the media list. This is like a huge list of media firms, contact information, emails. That is a great resource for us to have for our events that we have in town and that we're able to, you know, send our information to and do press releases and stuff with that. Let's see. Oh, also, as we were sitting there, I had mentioned to David that, you know, we've got some new businesses opening up, Strictly Discs, Millie's, and then the Cambridge Inn. I said it's a new boutique hotel, and he said, you know, his ears perked up, and he, you know, just said, you know, let me know when it's ready to open, because we're really interested in that, and maybe they could do a little bit of promotion for us on that. So I'll let him know on that. And I've just got a list of our upcoming events, Lions Club Fishery, Dip for Dozer, and then springtime comes with, you know, the Spring Pottery Tour and all that. So we've got our dates for the summer concerts already and a lot of the other stuff. The only other thing I wanted to say was thank you to Chris Brunig and his team at Public Works for helping the Lions Club with our downtown Christmas tree. It's a lot of work to put it up and take it down, so we do appreciate that. That's Alliance, thank you. I think that's it. And just thank you for your time, and thanks, Lisa and team, for always being there when I have a question.
No, I have a question, but I'll go first. Guys, any questions? For Carol? Carol, you, in the materials here, you talk about 60-second television spots.
Mm-hmm.
On which network or television station?
Is this a Discover Wisconsin one?
Yeah, I think so.
I'm not sure, but I will find out. I caught it this weekend on TV, and I don't know what channel I was watching, but I can find out.
I was just, you know.
Yeah, and the spots, I guess, get run during, I don't know when. Yeah, sometimes, okay, combination of, yeah, right. Yeah, they produce the TV spot. I'm not sure where, when it gets posted, you know.
Just, you've got my emails, so just curious, that's all.
Sure, yeah.
Okay.
I'll find out.
All right. Any other questions for Carol? All right.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, Carol. Appreciate you coming here, yeah?
Sure.
We'll see you in the second quarter.
See you.
All right. Other public appearances. Okay. Come on up, Nick. Are we looking at two minutes for these public appearances?
I don't know if we have a standard. If the ordinance starts, I don't know if it's been due.
We could do five minutes if we want to stick with the ordinance.
Okay. All right. We can do five, because I don't think we have that many people that are going to be talking tonight, so this is.
Yeah, we can always limit it on those nights when it seems like there's going to be lots of people, but if tonight seems like.
All right. So you've got five minutes, Nick. That's not, so you have to use it, but just wanted you to know that upfront.
Great. Thank you so much. Nicholas Miles, Dancin' Cut Distillery. Good to see you all in this new year. Appreciate your time and volunteering. I just want to take this opportunity that I do have to speak to you, because it's very difficult to speak to you people, because you don't want to talk to people who request agenda items, to work diligently to support your community in the issues of the vineyards. I also think it was probably imperative for the board familiarize themselves with the proceedings of the water meeting that occurred last time. I was here to talk to people, because something you've said to me before is that the village is not able to move quickly, but I am. So I will not be waiting for you guys to deal with MSA or whatever to get done, what you need to get done, if we do decide to truck in water and not purchase from you. I will not wait for a meter if you guys are dragging your feet. So again, I hope you guys show up for your community here and do the right thing. That would be wonderful. And as always, I'd love to offer myself as a resource for any members on the board who feel like they may not be getting complete information, or perhaps need a history lesson on the water issues here in the village. Given the new media replacement, this is a wonderful opportunity for you guys to support Chris and the Department of Public Works, and giving them all the resources they need to be successful, in keeping the system that you guys just paid a whole shit-ton of money for clean and operational, because it would be a real big shame for that to just fail again. So thanks again for your time. Happy New Year. Hopefully, you guys rise to the call, and this year is better than last, because last year was awful. Thanks for your time.
Okay. All right. Anybody else would like to come up?
I am Brenda Newman. This is Tim Phelps. We own 716 Kenseth Way. We've been here before. Now that we have five minutes, I got a little bit more that we could address, but a few things. We are wondering where we are at with the drainage situation since the last meeting as far as the, if anything's been discussed, if anything's been accomplished.
With Vulcan.
With Vulcan.
President McNally, I'm happy to respond with your permission.
Okay. Please, go ahead, Jan.
Yeah, I think what, my advice today would be very similar to what it was, the same as what it was at the last meeting, which is that for the village to really evaluate any kind of claim, the right procedure for you to follow would be to file the notice of.
No, no, no. I'm talking, we're talking the whole community.
The whole vineyards itself.
We have a subdivision that is wondering.
You know, we have three ponds that are not functioning properly as they should, and as has been pointed out by the Dancing Goat, Nick.
So has this been resolved?
You know, we don't want anything to happen to all of our homes that have, that are built and complete, not just the Vulcan homes, but the custom homes.
So we.
You know, this is, this is a community issue, not just us.
Since we've been here last, six homes have gone up. Six.
Yeah, so.
So we're, so our question, has the drainage issue, because again, everything that stands at the top of the hill is going to flow down and down and down. So has, has anybody contacted Vulcan and said, you know, their drainage has to be done? By the way, here's, here's an article from Roscoe, Illinois, that they have already had issues on not following the guidelines of drainage. So I'd be happy to share this with y'all, but it finally, because they thought that they could do thinner walls than they were supposed to do, and no drainage, so people had issues. So question being is, has anybody talked to Vulcan? Are they going to fix the drainage? Are they going to work on the drainage? Are y'all working on the drainage?
So in general, I don't want these public comment periods to become a question and answer session. That's really not what they're for. We're here to listen. I will say that that is an item on the agenda here later. I'm going to give the board an update on, on what I know about the drainage situation that we're working through with Dame Crowning.
Well, I'd like to give us an update, too, so us, as citizens in the, in the vineyards, actually know what you're talking about, instead of hearing it second, third, and fourth hand. That would be great.
It gets kind of old repeating the same things over and over.
You know, because when information is not disseminated, it gets lost. So please, if you have something, that would be great to let us all know from the vineyards.
And, and the people back here, too, because they're in the vineyards as well.
She's going to give an update on the, it's on the agenda, so you can stay and listen to what she has to say.
Okay. All right. So the next thing is, is, so obviously, the proper drainage would be included in what you're going to be discussing?
I'm going to talk about the background, the scope of what the village has jurisdiction over and what it doesn't have jurisdiction over. I'm not going to give a final resolution. I'm going to leave that to our county contact, who is Jason Tuggle, once he has a final resolution, where he can make a recommendation to the village. So my job won't be to get into the specific facts, but it will be to, to present an overview about what the village has authority over and what it doesn't.
Okay, so that being said, in three months, when Vulcan's done with the last six homes, and they walk away, are you all responsible?
Okay, so again, I, I really, we, we just can't have this be a question and answer session. The, the way that this is presented and set up for is for us to listen to you, and we're happy to do that, but we can't have a, like a cross-examination.
Well, so, but who do we respond to in three months from now? Who do we respond to? When, when Vulcan is gone? And by the way, Vulcan just, I've been informed Vulcan is now taking on another entity name. And once I get that information, I will share it with you, but I was just informed last night. So just an FYI. So, so basically, we're all sitting here waiting and waiting and waiting, but no, still no answers.
Yeah, I'm not going to repeat what I've already said. We're, we're going to update, I'm going to give the village board, you are welcome to be here during that agenda item, an update on what I think we have authority over and what we, what is outside the scope of the authority. I think a lot of our, the issues are very important, but are not within village authority. You're welcome to state. You're also welcome to read the memo that I wrote to the village on this, on this issue, but we can't just have a question and answer. This is absolutely a public, a public record, and it's part of the board packet.
Well, we did, we did those questions because we thought we only had two minutes. So it was kind of a question type of point tonight, because it seems like we're at a standstill, and nobody seems to have answers for us. I mean, we're already dealing with our home issue, let alone in three months when they, when they walk away. Who's responsible for all of this? Who, who's, who's the answer? Because when Vulcan walks, they're going to walk. They're going to change your name. What do we do from there? So does the village pick up from there?
Okay. All right. Can't answer that right now, but we have that. So is there anything else that you'd like to?
Solar. Solar. Is there an update on the solar? The solar issue, the 6,500 and some acres that they want to do for solar?
It's on the agenda.
It is?
Yeah, so if you guys stick around, you're going to think you're going to have more answers.
All right. Sweet.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
I got a question that matters more. So last week, they had an agenda item, and when they tried to ask questions on their agenda item, this lady, you told them that their agenda item was to update the village on their situation. It wasn't for you guys to ask questions or talk to them. So how do these citizens who need questions answered get questions answered? Because when they had an agenda item, you wouldn't let the board speak, and now when they're coming for public comment, there's still not a lot to converse.
So, so the point that.
Back up there, Nick.
The point that I want to make to the board and to you is that we can't just have, I mean, this can't just be, you know, a free-for-all. There has to be some decorum at the board meetings. And this is why we have the public comment period, is so that you can voice your concerns, the village can consider it, the village can then take those concerns and present, add future agenda items, so that when they do present something, it's on the agenda, publicly noticed for all to hear. But what can't happen is for you to just shout things out and expect the village to respond. That is not an acceptable way to run the meeting.
And we totally understand that. But again, we keep asking the same questions over and over and over again with no resolution.
And then people ask for agenda items, you don't give it to them. When you give it to them, they'll talk to them. It doesn't, they, it's incongruent with serving the community.
It's like we're standing up against a brick wall. You guys are no better than Vulcan right at the moment, because we can ask a question and we get, we hit that same brick wall. So we're at the bottom of the hill, and when water comes down the hill, it ends up in our basement, because the drainage system isn't right, or lack of, or not enough of. So who pays that bill when our basement floods? Where do we go when our basement floods? Or the neighbors flood? Or two houses down flood? Because we're all sitting in the same culvert that has lack of drainage. That's our question, but we don't have any answers.
Do you see our concern, ma'am?
Absolutely. I, I hear you.
Could we at least get some kind of answer?
Yes, but it's going to come when it's public, when it's on the agenda. We're not going to have, I, I can't just indulge your questions like this.
Last week when they were on the agenda.
No. We're, we're not, this is, this is not acceptable. You can contact me afterwards if, if you have a problem with how, with how I'm advising the village that the meetings should be run, but you can't just shout and demand that we talk about certain things. No.
I didn't mean anything. I asked a question.
Okay. All right. I'm going to move on. Are there other individuals that would like to speak for public appearance? All right. I see, well, I see this lady had her hand up first.
My name is Andrea Masati. I live at 705 Vineyard Crossing in the Ville, in the vineyards. I do not have a Vulcan home. I have a custom-built home. However, I know a lot of the focus on the drainage issues has been the three retaining ponds and apparently the berms that were put on Kenseth Way. However, there is now potentially going to be a different problem, which hasn't really come up, because it, I think there may only be one or two of the houses. So I have a home, and on one side of me is a Vulcan home being built, on the other side of me is a custom home being built. The Vulcan home being built, the ground now is at least two feet higher than it was before they started building. Our lots were even. So right now, the ground, right now, the, the foundation and the lawn is two feet higher than mine, which will run directly into my yard, into my basement. I have, and my neighbor on my other side, who is a custom build, they have a Vulcan home on that, on their other side. They potentially have the same issue. I've spoken to them. Their builder apparently has spoken, or tried to speak to Vulcan, to no avail. I've reached out to Vulcan more than once, to no avail, about how they're going to handle the situation with this new issue with the drainage. I have watched Vulcan grade, I would say, a dozen lots since I've lived there. All they do is push the dirt around. They've never brought dirt in. They've never taken dirt out. Based on what I've seen in the past with these homes, if they were to take dirt out on our adjoining side, more of the foundation is going to show. As it is right now, at least two feet of the foundation of that house shows. If they were to bring more dirt in, that would make the situation even worse, because the slope would be higher and it would drain down into my yard. I just basically want to know if, you know, it's the same as my neighbor's. I don't have the issue with the retaining pond, except I'm further down the hill than they all are. So I'm just wondering, I know there's been talk and, there's been talk about the drainage issues, and so now it's more just not even the drainage issues, but now it's the runoff issues. That I know right now, it's hard to look at with the snow cover, except when I'm standing at the lowest part of my yard, their yard is now at least two feet higher than mine, where it never used to be, because we used to mow that part before the house was being built, and it was always even. We never had to worry about, you know, going up a hill to mow in between our houses. So I'm just concerned about what is going to happen with the drainage and the runoff issues. I know that according to the covenants and that have been recorded, and I believe the subdivision map that was recorded, that the top, that the grading was never supposed to be changed. And it has been. It's been changed throughout the neighborhood. All of the houses on Kenseth Way, all of that grading has been changed. The grading now next to me has been changed. There is another Vulcan house being built next to that, which I don't think will be an issue, because they're basically even. The house, the Vulcan house that's being built on this side, in between the custom house, that yard was probably about four feet higher than it should have been, or than it was supposed to be. So my concern is just what's going to happen with the drainage issues and the, the apparent change in the, in the, in the grading that is making, that will eventually make the rest of us have water either in our yards, or in my case, possibly directly into my basement. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Blake Solenberger, 711 Kenseth Way. Mark and Lisa, thanks for getting back to me and getting this on the agenda for tonight for the stormwater management update. A couple of things, I'll make sure not to ask questions, we'll save it for then, but just to kind of give you some update on my latest thinking around this and some of the information I've collected that I want to share, is that. information I've collected that I want to share, is that, you know, we previously, at a village board meeting, had a vote to issue a stop work order. That's fact one. Fact two is, that was even probably unnecessary because a village engineer, on his own accord, can issue a stop work order under our village ordinances. And what we have is, we have a captive pond over by the Dancing Goat. What we have, as Andrea pointed out, heightened elevations, not across a row of Vulcan homes, but anywhere throughout the subdivision is Vulcan homes raised above the incumbent lots, meaning that this isn't like one alleyway on Kenseth Way, this is popcorn. Anywhere between incumbent house is a raised Vulcan house. Over here is a raised Vulcan house. It's like, a village engineer, I don't know if they ever went out, but could they just look around and go, I mean, you know, look around and point? I mean, there's all sorts of stormwater and erosion control issues here that a stop work order doesn't take an after Congress or vote of a village board, this should have just already happened. So there's our aspect. Additionally, too, there was a third issue they had, if anyone can remember. They had the captive pond, we had the elevation issues, oh, and then the berms on the back of Kenseth Way, clearly not a part of the approved plat map through CSM, also in and of itself, an erosion control and stormwater runoff issue. So again, this just gets back to, this needed to be a stop work order. I appreciate that we're having the topic tonight, but it actually didn't even need to come to the board, we just needed the village engineer to issue the stop work order. Jason Tuggle, back in May, actually said, because we were looking for advice from the county, I hear, they did the tour of the Dancing Goat, Jason Tuggle was there and told the village that they would offer a letter of support if you guys issued the stop work order. So we did get the advice from Jason Tuggle on that. And it is, yeah, it was a forwarded email.
It did send to you.
So that's all occurred, so we just need to have a stop work order. It's just as simple as that, and I look forward to talking about that more on the agenda. Next, totally unrelated, I know it's not on the agenda tonight, but just general public comment, I think with everything going on with the well and the medium updates, which is great infrastructure improvements to our water and sewer, is fantastic. I think we have a fight ahead of us still with Posh Kanon Solar, and that is going to severely impact our ability to grow, our ability to have a tax base to pay for the water bills, which are already really high for our residents, as well as take money out of our school districts. I would absolutely urge you that the year of 2022 is not a year to put the fire department referendum on the ballot. We already had it last year, just because it wasn't an answer the fire department committee liked, doesn't mean we get to have it this year. On a year that we're trying to grow a fire department, and we've got Posh Kanon bringing it down our neck, that might be the death knell on the growth of this community, I don't think it makes any sense to have a growing fire department for a town that's going to die. Or at least stay stagnant, if I'm putting a spin on it. But we shouldn't have a referendum this year. We already had the referendum last year, and we can't just have another one, and then another one, and another one, just because we're not getting answers we like. The people spoke last year, the people don't have to speak this year. Oakland, I read in the newspaper, is looking about what the referendum cost needs to be. We don't need a referendum, until we know if we're growing. Simple as that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sean Dutton from the Dancing Goat. I'll keep this real brief, I won't make this a Q and A and recognize the need for discourse. Just a public ask for the community members that I think are here and that are tuning in, it would be helpful to understand Jane's role. I understand there's RFP for a village attorney that's on the agenda later today, and that might overlap here, but just understanding Jane's role, who or what she's representing, I think would be very helpful for these community members. So that's just one ask to the board here. Thank you.
All right. Anybody else? Dean?
May I defer some of my comments to item number 8A? Would you like to have them in public?
8A on the solar, let's hold off on that, because you're part of that group.
Thank you.
You know, so.
Yeah, I may or may not want to speak. Well, I do want to say one thing here, quick in public comment. They, our attorneys and our submitted surrebutals, Mr. Mark Roffer with our, the planning.
Okay.
Wonderful, wonderful. Read them, they're on the website, they did a wonderful job, and our attorneys did a very, very good job in their filing their objections on there. So I just want to say thank you to that. And I'll defer the rest of my time possibly to that item. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else that wants to speak at this time? Okay, all right, seeing none, we're going to move on to approval of the consent agenda. It's got the board minutes of December 14th, and those, there was a correction made, Lisa?
Grammatical corrections were made.
Okay.
Since they were typed up on Friday the 7th.
All right.
And then I appear, I didn't get all of the grammatical errors, I only got page three, or three pages of them.
All right.
So there possibly may be grammatical changes to the last two pages.
All right.
Mark, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda with changes.
All right.
I'll second.
All right. Any discussion? All those in favor of approval of the consent agenda, which includes a water and sewer committee meetings or minutes and the village board minutes, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Gary's. All right. I'm going to move on to reports. I'll give you mine. There is, it's actually something that's, I had heard this from a resident, and I wanted to acknowledge Chrissy Brenwood and Vicki Redford. The resident had talked to me about the garbage that had not been picked up. And I don't know if it had something to do with the snow that had come down, and the can, the receptacles were not, they weren't able to get at it. But anyway, they did get ahold of Chrissy and Vicki, and you were able to get ahold of our garbage service, and they came out, and they were very, very pleased with that. So we are responsive, our village staff is. So thank you very much, ladies. Village office updates. Lisa?
I forgot my list upstairs. We've been very busy. Tax bills have gone out. We've received, first batched on our first export to the county, so halfway through with that. Still coming in, dog licenses coming in, a lot of year-end reports that are due to the state, the federal government, retirement, and so forth, working on all of those. Election papers have been submitted. We will have five candidates on the ballot for the three seats in April. As you know, a lot of ongoing projects we're working on, the RFPs did come in for the attorneys that will be on the agenda later. What am I missing? Like I said, I had my notes upstairs and forgot to bring them down. But it's, you know, busy year-end things.
Property tax bills, any glitches so far, anything?
They've been very smooth.
Okay.
About 46% has been collected for Dane County, and 52% has been collected for Jefferson.
All right. One minor thing, Lisa, did we have any kind of a duplicate billing on water and sewer bills?
Two bills were accidentally sent out to the, the reports are sent to the company who prints our bills, and it went out twice, so they printed the bills twice.
Okay, we don't get stuck with the postage on that, right? Are they going to make a credit?
This, I do not think we will get a credit. They do send Vicki a file to review, and she approved it, not realizing that it was double. So she had approved the file.
Okay, because I hear about that, about the water and sewer. All right, so it's just the...
There's some glitch, I don't know in the system, why it was sent twice, but we did approve the file.
Did you guys hear anything on that, or nobody said anything to you, two bills this last night?
I got two bills.
Everybody did.
Yeah. I threw one in the garbage.
Yeah. Yeah, I heard about it, so I was just curious.
She felt really bad, though.
Yeah.
She wanted to pay out of her own pocket.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. I mean, hopefully, we've got a control procedure here in the future.
It was a mistake.
All right, okay. All right, we got that. So I guess that's it for your update, then?
Yep.
Okay, let's move on to bills. Chrissy, what can you tell us?
There's a water and sewer report, too. Skipped over a water and sewer report, wasn't that part of the reports, or no?
Not on mine, but...
That was on the...
Oh, it was on the minutes. Okay, never mind.
Yeah.
I misread it.
Okay. All right, Chrissy?
The current bills that were done in January, they were run for tonight. First one was $44,457.39, and then the second one that was done late this afternoon, just because they needed to get paid before the next meeting, $13,601.20. Then, just going to jump to the bills that were done in December for year-end, $17,724.73 for the grand total, sorry, wrong page, grand total of $75,783.32.
We have a motion?
Make a motion to pay the bills.
All right.
A second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second to pay bills in the amount of $75,783.32. Questions? I've got two, and they're both dealing, I think, with tax refunds. And I could have called this in earlier, but Mark Evenson, there was a tax refund of $3,005.49, and then later, there was another one to Gary's about.
Basically, what it is, is that the residents want their bill paid in December in order for their accounting.
Property taxes, yeah.
And then they didn't wait, and then their escrow company then paid it later.
Okay.
So instead of that, they wanted the postmark.
All right.
To be done.
Okay.
And that's for both of those, and there's going to be a few more that happen. So I don't return the check, I just deposit it, then we reissue the refund to the resident.
Okay.
And then there was a bill, the bills last month, I had it, or last month, yeah, December, I had a total of $309,854.20, and it really was $310,854, it was off by 1,000.
Okay. Any other questions on bills? Okay, we got a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Franklin?
Yes.
Whitman?
Yes.
Geller?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
McNally?
Yes. All right, bills are paid. Thank you. Let's move on to new business. We're going to start off here with discussion and possible action regarding additional funds for attorney fees. Posh Kanon Solar. All right, who wants to?
I'll take it, Mark. But before I do, can I, just because of order here, it gets, I think it's easier to do the update, can I make a motion to move 9C above 8A? Just for order and consistency's sake, I think it's, it'll make more sense if I give an update and then ask for the fees. You'll understand why.
You're making a motion, we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, go ahead.
All right, so update, Dean alluded to this a little bit, but we have been doing a number of things over the past couple of months, or a couple of weeks, I should say, mostly around surrebutals. So we had our testimony that was submitted, myself, Mark, Lisa, Mark Roffers, who is our, who's been looking at the growth plan and sort of assessment of our village, and then there was an opportunity for Invenergy, as well as others, to give a rebuttal, and then we've submitted a surrebuttal. We, myself and the attorneys and Lisa and Mark reviewed all of the rebuttals that Invenergy had submitted, other than Mark Roffers. It didn't really make sense to rebuttal myself, or Mark, or Lisa's, mostly because some of the things Invenergy said, we felt actually helped potentially make our case better, or it would end up in a he-said, she-said situation, and I don't want to look petty in responding, I want to keep it clear, by the book, focused, and so we left it alone. That surrebuttal from Mark Roffers came in today. Take a look on the website, if you follow PSC, you'll see it. And then in terms of updates, where we're going next. So that was the end of surrebutts. We now have our hearing, which gives an opportunity for us to be sworn in onto sort of verbal trial, it'll be virtual, but myself, Mark, Lisa, and Mark Roffers, where there's an opportunity for questions, as well as examination, cross-examination, that is January 19th. Following that, there will also be a brief of that hearing, sort of a submittal of our stance and our case. I'm going to read some pieces from an email I got from Murphy Desmond that sort of covers some of these things, but I think beyond that, in our case, we sort of feel, at this point, we are, our written testimony has gone pretty well, like I said, the response to it didn't really hurt us in any way, it was just sort of a back and forth. We focused our efforts in the right place, I think, compared to some of the previous cases that failed in this area, Springfield and others, we didn't ask for too much. We focused on our growth, wasn't our growth plan, and stuck to that, which I think is helping our case compared to others. I still don't know which way it's going to go, I can't predict the future, but according to our attorneys and myself, who's been working in this space for now a year, it seems, or longer, it feels like sometimes, I feel like we're in a good spot, or at least the best we can do. But with that, because we are at that, so this is where I'll get into some of the fee piece, we have spent over the $60,000 we've already asked for, we're at $63,862.78. It gets a little bit odd because some of that is the money that was spent for Murphy Desmond working on some of the Hinchley discussions and things like that, that sort of muddies the waters, and we didn't have a solid attorney to help in those space, or some of the land planning and discussion there. So it's probably still in the space of around the $60,000, that's why I didn't ask for more. Also, just all came in at the end of this past year. So we talked to Murphy Desmond, we talked to Mark Roffers, their rough assessment is they're going to probably need about $20,000 more from Murphy Desmond, about $7,500 from Mark Roffers to cover the hearing briefing, and any final other pieces. I think I'd like to ask for $30,000 just to be safe and not have to ask again, any sort of final situation, but that's not to exceed $30,000, so same as before, we wouldn't exceed... What do you want to see for not to exceed number? $27,000 is the quote that we were given from Murphy Desmond and Mark Roffers. There, we had $60,000 to start with, and we set that, so you want to go to 90,000? So the new number is 90,000, essentially, total. Not to exceed? Correct. So any questions for me from the update? I'm going to, you want the motion now, or you want to wait? Up to you. I mean, I don't know, Mark, do you want the motion first for the fees, or do you want to ask questions first?
Well, we can get a motion, and we just, we don't have to vote on it, so if you want to make a motion, go ahead.
I'm going to make a motion to raise the fees, that was at 60,000 to 90,000, there was some discussion initially on this also, and not exceed 90,000, no, and to stop it there.
Okay, there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, now discussion.
Well, we've come this far, I think, you know, we've got to see it through. It's such an important issue. I think the residents would be comfortable seeing it through with these funds, so, yeah, keep fighting to the end.
Mike, can you explain a little bit, so after this round, if the PSC decides to not approve this current version, and we somehow get what we want, would we then, how do you say that, give up your intervenor status?
So my understanding, yeah, my understanding of the proceedings, and I would probably have to confirm with Murphy Desmond, obviously, if you know, I would welcome your opinion, but I would say, the way it works is it's, they submit their application, their CPC on application, if the answer is no, they have to resubmit a new application. So that application's dead in the water as it stands, they can resubmit it, I mean, obviously, they could do nothing and resubmit it again, but I would assume that wouldn't go anywhere. So they likely then will come to us, or to others, and say, what are we going to change? I'm hoping that that means they will then come back to us and say, we will give you what is in your smart growth plan as of today, or sort of have a discussion with us and come to the table. And in terms of who we need to get to make that decision, there's only two members of the PSC who can vote on this one, so as long as one says no, it's a no.
Okay, so then going forward, what, if that's the case, that they say no, and there's some sort of negotiation, obviously, a lawyer would have to be involved. Is there anticipated legal fees for that? Because that'd be beyond the 30...
Not yet. I'm assuming that would be sort of a development agreement. We didn't get into that with Murphy Desmond at the time. Likely, at that point, I think we'd have to have a discussion, is that Murphy Desmond? Because they know the history. Is it our new RFP for our attorney to cover sort of our village attorney, sort of in past Delometer developers' agreements? I don't know yet. And then we'd have to decide what exactly do we want, and I mean, I think we've got the skeleton and some of the main key points around where the solar sighting is, but there's a lot of sort of the other logistical things, like how are they going to, we're going to recoup money for our fire and EMS for the additional things around the battery storage, any other things that we may ask, whatever it might be. So it's kind of a decision, if it's a no, the ball's in the air court a little bit, but I think we have a little bit more leverage at that point. And really, you know, the entities that are...
And really, you know, the entities that are involved here, nobody's signed off on this.
Right, yeah. So I mean, after that point, what do we do in terms of an intervenor and everything else? That's up to us. I mean, this proceeding, we're, it's dead, there's no more, we're not an intervenor. A new application comes in, it's again, our decision, do we become an intervenor, or do we just stick to public comment, or whatever we wanna be?
What's the timing or the dates on this?
The hearing is the nineteenth. I think the brief is by the beginning of February. I don't think he has dates in here, but I think the brief, brief is due by February seventh, and then there's a response to those briefs that are due February twenty-first.
Okay.
And then we need to reapply for intervenor.
If a new CPCN application is submitted.
That's right.
If we want to be an intervenor, assuming they don't meet what we want.
They turned it down to, for us to be reimbursed the first time. There's no reason why we can't turn around and do it a second time.
Correct, you're right, yes.
On this right here.
True, yes, we could resubmit our grant application again for reimbursement, yeah. I think we'd have to figure out exactly how we claim the hardship potentially. I mean, I think we could look at some of our, what's going on right now in this year, what would be asked, and potentially re-clarify some things, but they did say no already once. I think we'd have to figure out, is that where we wanna spend some of our money, potentially, or not, so.
How much does it, is it gonna take for us to resubmit?
Depends on how much we need to rewrite that application. We feel like we need to rewrite it. I mean, it's, the bones are there, we submitted it once. We just need to tweak some things based on their response, but their biggest thing was around, we need to, we should be more prepared to plan around this. I don't think it was very favorable, the response that we got, in terms of submitting that necessarily.
Okay, so, but we will know pretty much where the village is at by the end of February?
Correct.
So what we're deciding now is thirty thousand dollars to add to what we've already spent to continue on with this.
Correct.
To get us to February.
End of February, yeah. I mean, at least through the current planned proceedings for this docket on the PSC. After that point, I think that, I don't, I'm not really certain how long it'll go on for. I mean, I'm assuming they'll make a decision after that, but, because I don't think there's anything else on the agenda for this docket after that point.
And you feel this is good money that's being?
I do. I think Murphy Desmond has done a great job for it. I mean, to Chuck's point, if we stop now, I don't know. We have to, I mean, I'm assuming the three of us will be called to a hearing, sole Mark Graffers, we have to pay for that part. I don't wanna go in alone, so. For my job, because I've been told I don't have a time on when I have to be at the hearing, but it's a whole day I have to be potentially on a Zoom, so I'm not interested in managing that myself.
I'll blame you.
Okay, other questions? Okay, can you repeat the motion, and then we'll do a roll call?
To add an additional thirty thousand toward the attorney fees for the Pashkanan Solor with not to exceed ninety thousand total.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Whitmer?
Yes.
Galler.
Cumbier.
Yep, yes.
Schaefer Wise. Rose.
Yes.
Franklin.
Yes.
McNally.
Yes. Dean, I, I'm sorry, I should have asked you earlier, but.
No, thank you very much, appreciate the support and.
Why don't you come up here, Dean, so they can introduce yourself?
Dean Mund, Cambridge, Wisconsin, born and raised in this lovely city, and, yes, I'll be resting here too. Thank you very much for doing that. My public comment was, thanks for the support of Pashkanan Solor. But I talked to Joan next door at the Village Library. We will have ourselves a big screen in this room for the Zoom meeting. So I just wanna make that publicly, it should be in the paper tomorrow, so I just wanna make sure that anybody that they don't have internet or would like to watch with a group and enjoy the proceedings, we'll have that on here next week down in the big room, from what I heard.
And it will just be to watch, not for public comments to the PSC, but for people to be able to watch if they'd like.
So if they don't have internet access, it'll be available. So that's why I say, thank you.
All right, thank you, Dean. Okay. Wyatt, always, thank you for what you're doing here. Okay, let's move on then. Item B here underneath new business, discussion, possible action regarding additional funds for Barbara Getner.
Contract.
Lisa.
So back in September, the board did approve fifteen hundred dollars for Barb to come in and help with the budget preparation, as well as to begin the process of cleaning out the old office. In the memo you have there, you see the time she has put in, we're just under that fifteen hundred. So she, we did, obviously, she helped with the budget, she has begun cleaning out the old office. Also, the storage room we have down here, going through purging the records that are no longer needed so that we can then move documents down here. A lot of what was in the storage down here was still wrapped from when we had the mold issues, and everything left to be cleaned and then brought back. It was put in, not cleaned out, reorganized. So she has purged, I think we shredded twenty-three boxes of documents that by state statutes could be disposed of. So organizing down here so that then we can move the documents down here for storage. So in talking to her, we were thinking thirty-five hundred to five thousand would be enough time to finish cleaning out and organizing all the files.
And I really think that one person that knows what they're doing is the way to do it.
Definitely.
You can't just bring another person in or a temporary service or something for this. This has to be done by somebody that knows the documents and.
Knows the documents and the laws on.
That's exactly right. That's right, so.
Yeah.
Did you, did you just say the dollar amount you were asking for additional?
Thirty-five hundred to five thousand.
Additional on top of the fifteen hundred?
Yeah, is what we thought would take two. And when we first approved it, it was approval for 2021, and we said we'd come back in 2022 then.
Do you remember what her rate was per hour? What her rate was per hour?
Thirty-five dollars. And mileage working as well, so.
I think this is something that we want done, and we've wanted it done for many years now, so I'll make a motion for Barb to complete the project not to exceed five thousand.
And then with the five thousand, this'll get it done?
That's right, we're gonna get it done.
Put a bow on it, okay. All right, I'll second.
Okay. Any other comments, questions?
As long as this is it, you know, get this thing taken care of, and spend a lot of money here, but it has to be done, and just put this one to rest.
I don't doubt that it has to be done. I, I do, I am concerned about the money. Thirty-five hundred to five thousand dollars, I, this, it does need to be taken care of.
We did put money in outside contracts in the budget this year.
How much?
Was part of the budget, ten thousand was put in. So it was, to your point, it was addressed in the budget.
And we think that this work would be done when, by when?
I can't give you an exact date, it depends on her, she does have a part-time job on her work schedule when she can come in.
Does she have any flexibility to try to, I get that she has a part-time job, but to like focus it so we're not spending as much on mileage? Like, right now, just looking at it, we spent about a third on mileage alone, over thirty-one hours. I worry that another roughly, I don't know, somewhere between seventy-five and a hundred and twenty-five hours, we're gonna have a lot of mileage.
To come in for full days.
Okay, perfect.
Exactly.
Good. I think that'll help.
Yeah. I know one of the days she was coming, that was billed, she was coming from up north, so she didn't charge both ways. She was here for a while, had to leave for a dentist, or doctor's appointment, and before came back, you know, so working around those. But, yeah, more work on full days.
Perfect.
Let me ask this last question. Are we using all of our available personnel hours as effectively as we could? Because I'm thinking, there's you, there's Chrissy, and this isn't Vicky, but there's Judy.
Vicky and Judy could not be going through these documents and deciding what to do. They will be helpful once we start, you know, once things are organized to pull over, to be able to say, this is what's being filed, and doing the filing and so forth, but sorting through the material.
But they don't have the expertise to do what we'd have to have Barb do.
You know, yeah, I could be in there helping, but that's taking away from everything I'm doing. But, yes, staff will help where they can, but it can't be the initial sorting and going through things.
Okay. All right, we've got a motion and a second. Any other further questions?
I'd just say in general, I mean, we're spending a lot of money, so we need to be as efficient as we can to be fair to the taxpayers. So I'm gonna be, the next year, I'm gonna be harping on that pretty good. We need to be efficient, we spend our money appropriately, so. Yeah, that's all I got.
Anything else? Okay, roll call.
Galler.
Cumbier.
Yes.
Schaefer Wise. Rose.
Yes.
Franklin.
Yes.
Whitmer.
Yes.
McNally.
Well, this thing passes before it gets to me. No. But it passes. So. We'll, we'll look to see that this is done for five thousand dollars, not to exceed, and get this job done here, the beginning of this year, by March thirty-first. Okay. Let's move on to unfinished business, stormwater management update. Attorney Landretti.
All right, so I'll go ahead here. So my role, actually, is to work on specific projects that the board asked me to work on. And one of those, one of those projects is to help identify the authority associated with the stormwater permitting. So in that capacity, I've been talking to Mr. Tuggel, who works on behalf of Dane County, as you know. The county is the one who makes the recommendations to the village. And then the village, yes, and then the village makes the formal approvals on that. So I just wanna acknowledge that there are some really important issues that we've heard, associated with the drainage issues, and I just, I totally understand people's frustration about it, I really do. There are some of those issues that are just outside of the village jurisdiction. And so I just wanna kind of talk about what we're seeing so far. And again, Mr. Tuggel is the one who will be making a specific recommendation to the village, not me. He's the one who's been doing all the work, but, but we thought it was worth just sort of setting the table here about what, what we even can look at when we're looking at stormwater permitting. And so I'll start just by talking about the uniform dwelling code, because that's what the building inspector is looking at. You know, and regularly enforces the uniform building code, just as a matter of routine. One thing that we've gotta keep in mind there about the scope of the regulations that exist as part of the uniform dwelling code is that they are looking at a lot, you know, the universe that they are looking at is that one lot. And their, their duty, when they're looking at that, is to protect the dwelling that's on that lot, and to make sure that the land is sloping away from the lot. It's not within their duty, it's not within anything that's in their purview, to look at neighboring landowners and how they would be affected by the drainage. And so I just wanna set, set that, set the table for that, because, because that's one of the core things that the building inspector is looking at here. We, so the other point I wanna make about the uniform dwelling code is that where that applies, a lot of other regulations don't apply there. Specifically, stormwater erosion control requirements don't apply to single and two-family dwellings, because the uniform dwelling code applies, and so there's not the double regulation there. So, so when we're looking at these single-family residential lots, that's what we have to work with, is the uniform dwelling code. And I'll just pause there, because it looks like maybe there will be some questions.
Yeah, but from the, from the beginning, when, when this project came to the village, there were civil engineering drawings made up, okay? And the builders have to follow those civil engineering drawings for, for, for the big one is first floor elevations, finished first floor elevations. If those are wrong, the builder will have to go back, have to come back and, and, and put it to the elevation that it states on those civil engineering drawings. And I don't think there was any, nobody really took a look at that.
So that totally could be true, but what we're looking at here, as far as the stop work order is concerned, is the stormwater permitting piece of it.
That's right.
Right? So, but I'm gonna get to that, too. I do wanna address, like, how, what role is that supposed to play in here?
That's right.
So definitely, it's an important piece of it, but I just, I just wanted to make the point of, the building inspector's role is to be looking at these individual lots, and then the other thing about it is, it's at a specific point in time. It's not, you know, it was when the building inspector went to do the inspection. That is, he had to look at what was there on the ground at the time. It's different than if we're looking at stormwater protections, where there's, you know, there's these post-development requirements that are, that are ongoing.
And you have to follow them.
So there's just a lot of limitations that are built into our authority, where we're, where we just cross-reference the uniform dwelling code into our ordinances. And this is what most villages do, they cross-reference, you know, it's very common. There are some exceptions. Wanaki has decided that they wanna have control over much more grading, you know. If you wanna plant a garden, I can't remember if it's a village or a city, but within, within their municipal limits, you have to go get a permit. That is an approach that you could take going forward. It's a really heavy lift for the village to take. I mean, you'd have to make sure you could even get a building inspector who would want to, you know, want to inspect all that, and you'd wanna make sure you wanna take on all of that, and, I mean, that's a heavy lift. But that would be the way to do it. It is within your authority, if you wanted to do that looking forward.
But Dane County plays a big role in this, too.
Absolutely, so.
And that's a, that's a big point. You know, you don't do anything in this, in the village, or, let's say, Christian or whatever, building, unless Dane County approves it.
But you would have, I appreciate that, but you would have authority if you wanted to go through that process. My only point here is that you haven't, right? And so, so what we're looking at here is, is not that. We don't have a situation where we have any sort of village control over how people grade their yard, and the effect that that grading has on their neighbors, when we're looking at single-family dwellings.
So then, question for you. So in the case of the comments that were made tonight, for that, the case where a grading was higher now than it was previously, or is higher than the home next to it, long-term, is that now a civil dispute between the two property owners?
Exactly.
Or at least until, while the building, the builder is working on it, it's a civil dispute between the current property owner and the builder, eventually, the two property owners.
Exactly.
Okay.
It's the, it's the, we have in Wisconsin, it's called the reasonable use doctrine, and it is just developed through case law. There's no statutory standards, and nothing for a village that would, that would create any standards that a village would.
And that's just for two single dwellings. I know you're gonna get into the stormwater stuff, which I have a question on, which I'll wait till you give your comment on that.
Sure.
Okay, so just to be clear, so when the building inspector shows up for his final occupancy permit. he's looking at, at the house, that the grade is, it's graded away from the foundation, and that's it, correct?
Yeah, I mean, it's, I, I don't mean to oversimplify it. There's some standards set out, but that, the purpose behind all of the standards that exist are to protect that dwelling.
Okay.
There's nothing that says anything about the lot line at the edge of the lot and, and how, how the water is gonna flow from there.
But it should have been looked at.
So that's, that's what Scott's, that's what he's looking at, so.
Okay, so, okay, so this is the same building inspector who failed to properly.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna just take questions from the village.
Please, we're gonna, we'll have to.
So we were, and so my other point was, uh, in planning, we, we started working on a right-of-way permit, where we would hold a $2,000 bond and, uh, the public works director, you know, at the, for them to get their, you know, once they finished, completed the build, would look at the, at the final grade, and that could help with stormwater management. If any, there's gonna be issues, we could withhold that $2,000. I think that would help with alleviate a lot of these problems. So what he, it hasn't made it to the board yet, but that's something that got passed in planning.
Yeah, so as far as that stormwater permit, some, what, maybe that's within the universe of what Mr. Tuggle then is looking at for the stormwater. So, uh, let me just make sure I covered all the points there, and I'll go on to the, um, the stormwater piece of it then, too. So I, I'll just say, so this master plan, the certified survey maps, all of these expectations that we have as far as what the grading is gonna look like, yes, those have to be submitted, they will play an important role, but they are not the regulatory standard. When we are looking at the stormwater performance standards, these are statewide standards, you know, we're looking at, they're water quality-based standards. And they, so, yes, while the master plans are important and help Jason, or help Mr. Tuggle be informed about whether the, the stormwater.
If the water's gonna run in the right direction and stuff like that.
Exactly. It's important not to confuse that with, are they in compliance with their stormwater permit? It, that is a different question than have they complied with their CSM or their work plan? Or, is it two, two different questions there? And so I acknowledge, it could well be the case, I don't know the details. It definitely sounds like they are not in compli, you know, I don't want to use the word compliance for the CSM. It definitely sounds like there's some, there's a difference between what's happening on the ground and what's happening in the CSM. That definitely could be true. That definitely could be true, but that does not necessarily, it doesn't direct Mr. Tuggle's recommendation about whether there's a problem with the stormwater performance standards. And that's, that's the world that he's got to operate in. So, so now he has requested the updated plans as recently, I, it, early December was when he last updated the plans. And so he should be getting a response now to see what those plans were. There's a distinction on the commercial side of the lot, that's where he had previously had, had issues. I think back in May, he said, oh, those, they don't look like they're gonna meet standards. Then the engineers responded to his satisfaction as far as the stormwater goes. Now, the, the concern that he has that applies to the entire lot is that he still needs the as-built and the, and the, the updated plans. But, but he doesn't have anything to base on right now that says it can't meet the stormwater performance standards. So, were you about to say something? I thought I heard you take a breath to speak, okay, so, um, so this is, this is where we're at. Now, Jason should be the one who comes and tells you the, you know, the details about all this. I, I just, we, we've talked about this at a, at a high level, and I just, I thought it was important to just talk about this because there, there are so many important concerns being raised. And I just want to manage expectations to say, a lot of those important concerns, important as they are, are not something that we can deal with in a stormwater review.
So then, so then what we can do, it sounds like, besides what the planning commission is already thinking about, it sounds like we could, if say Jason Tuggle doesn't have anything today, we could direct our engineer to review the whole subdivision for stormwater drainage, right? And that sort of covers, that is where our control is, if there is problems, we can then take action based on that review from our engineer.
You can definitely take action, so the question is, what's, to what standard are you gonna apply it?
Yeah.
You know, Jason thinks it's gonna meet the stormwater standards.
Okay.
I'm not sure what other standard you'd apply, uh, besides that. It could be just that you want to take a fresh look at it, which is totally fair, you definitely have the authority to do that.
And then back to the earlier comment that was made during public comment, it sounds like Jason Tuggle may have already offered support. Is, I mean, is there, can, I don't know if you're following up with Jason, or if Lisa is, if, if one of you could call him and say that that was mentioned, we can, it sounds like we have support for people who would tell us that that was, that happened, and ask him if that's the case, and then try to get that recommendation sooner potentially, rather than have him re-review whatever he's reviewing.
It's up to President McNally.
Hold off for just a little bit, I don't mind it, but it's, let's. Yeah. Yeah, okay, keep going.
Okay, well, I, I've kind of gone a little bit out of order here, so I just want to make sure that.
Jane, Jane, just to, I want to confirm this. We did have that 2,000 that the planning commission decided upon, which was reserved, you know, funds that would be on deposit, and that wouldn't be released until the final inspection, but that's not gonna work for any of the homes that are currently under construction.
No.
It's just for new homes that haven't applied for their permitting yet.
It wouldn't be retroactive, that's correct.
Okay, just so you're aware of that.
And that has not come to the board for approval yet, as it's a new policy that is, has a lot of teeth to it and so forth. We're waiting until we do hire new legal to take a look at it, to make sure it's implemented correctly.
I guess I got a question, Chuck, you build a house out there, did they give you an elevation for the first floor elevation, finished first floor?
Yes, I, I get a site plan, and when I get my zoning permit, it hand, I, you know, I have to conform to, you know, appropriate drainage with swales and things like that, and I have to stick to it. And in Deerfield, with that right-of-way permit, the public works director comes out and makes sure that my final grade is to that site plan. And if it's not, he's gonna hold my $2,000, so I always make sure it's.
Or he's gonna make you, to bring it to that standard.
Yeah, I won't get my $2,000 bond back, so it holds the builder accountable on a, you know, each project.
And if you would have set that, let's say you set the first floor elevation six inches too low, or six inches too high, that inspector can make you change it.
Yeah, or get fined or something.
I've seen it happen, so I know they can.
Well, how do you take a house down?
You can't, you can get fined.
Well, you can cut six inches off the foundation if you have to.
But you're not, you know, you get inspected, and you put the forms up, and they make sure it's where it's supposed to be before you port.
Okay, all right, Jane, go ahead, and you can continue here.
Um, you know, those were, those were the main points I wanted to make. I just wanted to, like, acknowledge that when we're looking at the stormwater authority, you know, there's the stop-work order authority that comes along where there's a violation of Chapter 15. So I just want to, you know, kind of point out, that's something different than saying that the plans are not, that the construction doesn't match with the plans.
Chapter 15 is the building code?
Sorry, Chapter 15 of our ordinances, which is a stormwater and erosion control, yes.
Okay. All right, I'm gonna be, I'll entertain if people.
One other question I have, for Lisa, I guess, and for you as well. You mentioned the new policy, it's gonna have some teeth to it, we need our attorney. I get that we are, we have an RFP out. Are we able to direct, are, are you willing, and are we able to direct you to potentially work on it, so we can do that sooner, rather than waiting for potentially a subcommittee to do the review, take additional weeks? If we could have that to the board sooner, I get that this is something bigger, and it may take more than by the next meeting, but I assume the RFP for the attorney may take to the end of February, and I'd rather have this sooner rather than later, and try to get it to us, either to the planning commission by the beginning of next month, so they can send it to us, or we can just come straight to the board faster.
This does sound like something that's in your.
You know, I was actually the DNR stormwater attorney for years, and, and I worked on drainage issues as well, and erosion control for the county, so I, I told Matt that I wanted, Matt Dragney, that I wanted to work on this. And so, um, it is definitely something that's an area of interest.
And I'm assuming we have some sort of template based on, if Deerfield already does this.
I would like to use their exact template, 'cause it works. And take a look at it, and, you know, it, we don't need to fix it, it's not broken, so.
Do we need to make a motion to do that, or is it?
Well, I got a feeling, I got a feeling Lisa, you may already have some information here on, on that. The attorneys?
That's the next, or that's an agenda item later, we'll talk about that.
Oh, but I can work on things at President McNally's request.
And tie to these issues that were currently, she's currently dealing with.
I consider it an extension of, of this, if, if it's your request.
Okay, I saw two residential hands being raised back here. Blake, a quick question.
Not a question, just next step, because I think the error, and we, because I was the attendee of that meeting when we did the vote for the stop-work order, we based it on some presumptions, and if you can clear up, maybe for the incorrect cap to date. What we don't really know is what's the correct cap to date that Lisa doesn't layman. You know, Chuck, I know you go through this all the time as a builder, probably even with your own home. I know when I have to do excavation for my pool, both Jeffrey, and then I have to work the Chris, I have to remove the fill, so it's like, there clearly is some process here that me as just a person taking out pool fill, excavation fill, have to move it off the site. Like, I have to do something about that. I was told to do something about that, but like, it didn't seem to happen for Vulcan, because all of it's still sitting on the lot, and we call it burns now. Then the other thing, too, is part of enforcement, under 1544, there's a section 160 about enforcement penalties, this is stormwater and erosion control.
Wait, 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 sorry, can I stop you and ask what, what section did you say?
1544?
Yeah.
15 dot 44 dot 16. And I'm not trying to, like, you know, figure out what it's like, but, but, in my case, whenever a village doesn't need any noncompliance provisions of the chapter, it's basically, I'll just paraphrase, they have to, you know, try to communicate with them, they have to voluntarily get back in compliance, but then they also can't issue a stop-work order, which will cause all activity not necessary to correct, and our compliance to cease until all noncompliance is corrected. So it actually is within our control, especially around stormwater.
Yeah, I actually have this highlighted in my version, too. But so it's a, it's a, so it's an important point you raise, it's a violation of Chapter 15 that triggers this, right? So that's what we're trying to find, where is the violation of Chapter 15?
You just need to send somebody out there to see where, like, is, is the master site grading plan, is the stormwater control plan? Those are two things. The master site grading plan is Chapter 16, the stormwater control plan is Chapter 15, we need to look at both. And we need a village doesn't need to go out there and do that, because under both sections, we don't even need a vote. Like, a village doesn't need to issue the stop-work order, actually more specifically than it doesn't need in the grading plan, the master site grading plan has to be checked and certified by the village engineer, and then if any noncompliance is found in the master site grading plan, there's also enforcement options there. So I think I encourage you, we absolutely do have teeth, and we need to look at this from a wide scope under both Chapter 15 and Chapter 16. And if I may suggest, I would like, either at the pleasure of Mark, or at the voting of the board, I would really highly encourage Chuck, as somebody who does this thing on the other end of it, as a person who has to pull bonds and get them back, I would really love you to be a liaison and a screen for when this village engineer, attorneys, or whoever goes out to evaluate master site grading, as well as erosion control.
I don't disagree with anything you said, that was very articulate. The one thing I would say, I agree that it would not have to be a village body taking a vote on some of those things, but when they do, then it should be public notice and on a, you know, on a, on a meeting, public notice ahead of time.
I just know what we did was in between the time that on, you know, it was determined outside the meeting that they, that the vote on stop-work order wasn't legit, and it was right away, all we did was lose time when, again, because we don't need a vote, somebody could have just said, oh, yes, the narrow definition of what we voted on was wrong, let's open this up and let's get somebody out there. Please, don't wait till the next meeting to pivot and get flexible about this. Let's understand that we just need to get somebody out there, look at both 15 and 16, and I would really appreciate if somebody like Chuck could really kind of understand, because he's a builder himself, would be excellent. Some of the tests, I'm like, he's a building builder.
But it's not a builder we need, right? It's, we need our engineer to review the stormwater erosion, or is it anyone can do it?
Which grading, too, which is grading, too, it's not just stormwater, 15, 16, these guys, I mean, you gotta look at both.
Yeah, that's the important question. So my understanding is, right now, we're hanging our hat on the stormwater piece of it, right? And, and if I, if I understand you correctly, maybe that's not the issue.
Well, I hear that the pond is captive, so that sounds like stormwater, but, see, I don't know, I guess that could also be technically grading, like, I, I don't know where the terms end and where they begin, I just hear language of 15 and 16 that all sound relevant.
Yes.
And whether, whether they're vote or not, an issue according to the ordinance is, where the master site plan or the stormwater control erosion plan, I'm less certain, but we need to look at both.
Yeah, I agree with you, relevant, but also in some cases outside of the jurisdiction for teeth.
Okay, all right.
Okay, so President McNally, I'm happy to answer.
Yeah, I don't want this to, to get into something where, um, we're, we're using this. I mean, if you had a public comment on it, and I know it's not what you, you want, but, um, I've got to go through the process, and I, we're gonna be talking about this as far as how we can continue this in future meetings. Because I, I do understand that residents have concerns. We've got to be able to, to be accommodating, flexible for that. Brenda, you had your hand up, so I'm gonna.
Uh, concern is that prior to these homes being built, which Andrea and her husband and three or four of their homes were already there, prior to the light, they were already there. So the drainage system that is there, was there, is still the drainage system that is now having to take the load of now 22 additional houses. So how does that compute in a proper drainage? And then everything goes to that retention pond, and nothing is protected in that retention pond, which then takes the retention pond to fill up backyard, which then goes to the farmer in the backyard. There's nothing in there, Vulcan has done nothing to, to sway the, the retention ponds to go a different direction, to drain another direction, it's all gonna fill and, and fill into our, our basements.
Okay.
So what started as the, a drainage for a minimal amount of houses is now not minimal anymore. So we now have an overload of homes that has this small section of drainage. So something has to be done, somebody's gotta look at this and say, okay, how much water can flow through these pipes and down these, these ravines that are now going to fill into the backyard, into a retention pond, into a farmer's yard.
All right.
This is not something that is just five or six houses anymore.
Okay, all right. Do you have a question here, Nick, or an observation on the residential side of it?
More for Jane, if you're looking at Chapter 15, I can humiliate this, too. That is a captive pond, which I think does trigger Chapter 15, but also, when we're talking about the captive pond, we're talking about the large retention pond that's supposed to exist south of my facility, not on the residential side, correct? But also, far south, there's a third retention pond that exists that's not supposed to exist. And the DNR has acknowledged that, and it's where they excavated the big land, Frank did it, to take, to get theirs to make lots level for the greater ones that are even 20 feet. And it's, uh, it's, it's, it's actually formed retention pond that takes all the water that should be going into that captive pond. And it, and from things I've been looking at, that, it does seem like it could trigger this, so I just wanted to get that out, it's kind of like we were having a constructive conversation.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, no, it's, it's helpful, and I know people.
Where does the old fall of the retention ponds go?
This is not gonna go away, we're gonna be talking about it some more, I just, I'm wondering about the engineer, village engineer.
So, I mean, it sounds like.
Go ahead. Jane.
Jane, so, so two possible actions, it seems like, coming out of this discussion.
One, you, you will put, you're willing and able to review the policy from the planning commission for the right-of-way, sort of the new policy.
Yes.
For future, I get that's not for current existing homes being built, but for any other inspections. The second piece, then, at, at minimum, in your opinion, and do we have enough, based on the comments tonight, to trigger Section 15? Or do we, what else do we need, essentially, to trigger that, in your opinion, to then perform the stop-work order?
Right, so I would always defer to Mr. Tuggle on, on that, and, but in, but my understanding of his opinion on that, from a technical perspective, is that he's, he's satisfied substantively with what has happened from us. And but in, but my understanding of his opinion on that from a technical perspective is that he's, he's satisfied substantively with what has happened from us, from a storm water standpoint.
Okay.
Not that it's okay what's happening to people's.
Yeah, yeah.
Properties.
So then, I mean, could, in your opinion, could we, because of the fact that it doesn't require us to necessarily take it back to the board to vote on this. Could we direct you or Lisa or some, or Mark to talk to Jason, get whatever he needs or have him confirm with us? And then trigger section fifteen and perform the stop work order? Or do we need to come back to the board by next meeting on the twenty-fifth?
Okay, so here's the, here's the concern I have, and this actually addresses the question about where do we get the jurisdiction? The concern that I have with the stop work order is it relies on a violation of chapter fifteen. Maybe chapter sixteen too, I take your point on that. But, but for this, for this conversation, we've been thinking about chapter fifteen.
Please be quiet back there because we are having a hard time. Thank you.
So it's triggered where there is a violation of chapter fifteen. And that's what we haven't found yet, according to Mr. Tuggle's opinion. Inconsistent construction that doesn't match the plans, yes. But a violation of the storm water and erosion control performance standards, no.
So then I guess, I guess rephrase what I just said. Since you're already in contact with Mr. Tuggle. In the next two weeks before our next village board meeting, if you continue to talk to him and share some of these opinions and thoughts from tonight in the discussion. If he says that seems like enough, can we act there as a village without having to come back to the board by the twenty-fifth? Or do we need to come back to us as a board to vote on any recommendations?
If you as a board were to take action on it, on, on anything, I think it should be as part of a meeting.
But will you have a chance to be able to have this discussion?
Yes, but let me be clear. Yeah, he has requested these plans already. And so he's waiting, waiting on those. But I just don't want to create the expectation that there will be enough for a stop work order.
I know, I understand that. I'm more just saying, I'm just trying to figure out what is the next action.
What is the next action?
It sounds like, it sounds like there will be discussion in the next two weeks with Mr. Tuggle. And there will be an update at the next village board meeting, potentially to take action, if there is enough.
Yeah.
And I would say I would recommend just sharing the comment tonight that he already offered recommendation in the past for a stop work order, potentially. I think asking if that did, if he remembers and can confirm it.
Yeah, you know, I actually have talked to him about that point and I, I do have a little different, I mean, I could share what he said. We were, Lisa and I had a conversation about that. So my understanding from him, I actually wrote this down, so I could, I could tell you exactly what, what his recollection of that. But that he recommended that the village back in May withhold permits from future development on the commercial lots until those concerns were addressed.
Okay.
Well, that was his recollection of it, his understanding of it. And subsequently, those, those concerns on which he based that were addressed.
Okay. You said commercial, not residential?
Commercial, yes. All of his storm water concerns were actually on the commercial side.
Yeah, but when.
All right, so you'll be able to have this discussion, you hope, within two weeks?
So he, yeah, we're, I'm, I talk to him regularly. We, we were hoping that he might be able to present an update to you. I'm only doing it because he didn't have everything that he needed in order to feel like he could make a recommendation to you.
Okay.
But maybe what the next step might be appropriate is for him to establish some sort of timeline on when he should receive that documentation. So that we could, we could have some, some response to you about when he'll be able to report back his recommendation, if that makes sense, as a, as a next step.
Would you think he'd be willing to come here and present his recommendation in public?
Yeah, we actually asked him to do that. And he said that as soon as he's ready to do it, he will.
That would be very helpful.
So, yeah, I, I can't promise that he'll have anything by.
Right.
Two weeks, but we could do it.
What is he waiting on? Just the as-built documentation?
Yes, and he made that request, I think it was December third, something like that, without a specific deadline by which he.
But that was for the commercial side of it, correct?
For the entire thing, he wanted.
Oh, he was, okay, okay.
His, so let me just be clear. His substantive concerns with whether the storm water standards were being met was on the commercial side. His concern that we still need as-built documentation applies to the entire lot. So, so he's asked for plans for the entire lot so that he can match up the, the actual construction with, with the plans.
Does he physically go out and check or?
Oh, he will.
Get the documentation?
Yeah, he, he does, he does go out and do site visits. He's been out on this one too.
I got a feeling the vineyards is going to drag their feet on this as-built and not provide it for a while. Is there, is there any recourse we could take to get him to force him to do it?
We could definitely put some pressure on him just by, you put the pressure on the, on the vineyards to, by asking for it, by a date certain. And, and creating that expectation. I think that that's.
To add to Chuck's point, do we need to trigger section fifteen or sixteen, I don't know if I'm using my words here, to hold permits? So if they have additional buildings they need to be built, can we just pause, like, offering any other future permits for this time until we get that? That these, these plans essentially?
Yes, I think, I think you could do that. I hate to say that off, I know I want to go look at your ordinances to just look at that fifteen language.
I'm just wondering if that's a potential action that we can take in the next two weeks, assuming he will have, he may not have something by then. And knowing this right-of-way policy, even if you were to have it by next meeting and we adopt it, that's still only new buildings. And I think we could potentially just hold permits until we have.
Yeah, maybe we should do this because I really would like to look at your ordinance before I launch in anything. So why don't I start with the suggestion that we put, that we make a specific time ask? And then, and then if that is not met, we'll look into our, lay out the options legally on what recourse we can get to get that back more quickly. It could be that the public pressure that we're creating right here could help. Or if there is a, if he's scheduled to come to a meeting, that could help too.
Okay.
Any other questions for Jane, for Jane from the board?
Thank you very much, Jane. This is very helpful.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to just give you a very quick, I'll start with you Blake, but you got like ten seconds.
The whole thing's around that step. One is not just that he gets the plans and he prepares an update for you guys. Maybe it was implicitly, but I don't want to hear it explicitly, that he's taking those plans and then also actually going out there and looking at what's on paper. Let me get my grading and like, like actually see how it differs. The other thing too, I heard the storm water plans and the as-built plans. I did not hear the master site grading plan. We need that. So we need those three things and you also need to go out there.
Yep, yep.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And you also get a fifty dollars to five hundred dollar a day fine for any provision within chapter sixteen related to grading. So you do have to keep per day. So you do have to keep there. Why you have a great point about maybe with fifteen, maybe it's not that clear because I think it goes, then enforcement's a little less clear. Well, there's just not a dollar, not like.
That's a good point too.
So maybe you're right there and maybe you could consider the condos. I think there's six more properties that's in mind though, that there are a few things I care or apply to sign on. Well, it's not going to be Vulcan, but it's still, it's still Frank in the beginning.
Yeah, okay, all right, thank you. Brenda, you had your hand up.
Yeah, Jane, you had mentioned that this, he did the commercial inspection. We're not, has he been out to the residential at all?
His, yes, he has done the review of the entire, of the entire property. His concern was with.
He's been out there. He's physically walked all the different scenes, not by paper.
This is my understanding is that he has, that he has physically been out there. I, I don't want to, I don't want to go too far. I don't know exactly where he's been or any, but I do recall him telling me that he went to the site to visit. Yes, I know that he was physically at the site.
How many houses have been now built upon? Because maybe his may visits to his January twenty twenty two.
Would, would I think the next step is keep doesn't need to go out there now, now that we have more.
Yeah, now that we have this many houses that have been added, because you said back in May, it was. Now we have twenty-one more houses that have been put up in that, in that time span.
Yeah, and let me be clear, May was just one example of his back and forth with the, with the developer. There were also examples in, in September where he was asking for more and then, and then they made adjustments accordingly. So there's been several iterations of him asking for, for things and then, you know, they were addressed at the site.
Up front Vulcan?
Yeah, Q U A M engineering is, is, hands on the ground, it's, that's the contact is, is Q U A M engineering.
And what was the name of it?
Q U A M engineering.
And that's Vulcan's engineering?
No.
Okay, all right, Nick.
Who did the master grading plan?
So there is a December fourteen email that me, you, her, Mike were on from Frank, where he recently resubmitted the twenty eighteen CSM to say if we all agree on the. And it's the one that he never filed. He basically said if we all agree that this works, you know, we can just use this. To my knowledge, and Mike can confirm this to me, that CSM is actually expired because it was not adopted in its year of time. And so that's just throwing that out there is like, that's one way that he's going to just waste time. And so I was just throwing it out there that like, if he thinks that he could just resubmit to twenty eighteen, it's no longer valid per the engineer's validation.
Thanks for that, yep.
And I'm gonna, I'm zipping this to you right now, just at the top of your inbox, just to, I'm sure you're organized, I'm sure you also have a lot of emails also. I'll just zip it to you right now.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'll close that, comments there. Any last questions here from the board? All right, we'll have this back on the, on the dais for.
I'd like to make a motion in the meantime to have Jane and/or your legal, what are you with?
Affirm, Stafford Rosenbaum.
Firm Stafford Rosenbaum, to review the.
Right-of-way permit?
Right-of-way permit, so we can get that going sooner. Is that?
That sounds great. And maybe, do you have something you can send me on that? Okay.
Yeah, I have a detailed email with a template. Not to, I hate to put dates on people necessarily on the spot, but can we commit to having something to review by the twenty-fifth in two weeks?
Okay, so we can commit to asking for that by the twenty-fifth. I just, I. No, 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 I, I just, so.
I get it, I.
It's just, it's correspondence that I'm not privy to.
No, no, sorry, not that, not that piece, the policy. So the right-of-way, the right-of-way policy.
Oh, oh.
By the twenty-fifth, can you review the Deerfields policy and potentially have us ready to adopt it by the twenty-fifth?
Ah, yes, I'm going to go on vacation next week, but I will do my best.
You can wager bets and say that you will try and that we will plan to have an update. But I would like to at least have a plan to have that as an agenda item on the twenty-fifth.
I'll do my best.
You're going to have electric where you're going on vacation, right? So you can take your laptop and you can do it there. That's fine, we don't care. All right, you, you had a motion or did you want to make a motion?
I'll second.
All right. Lisa, can you, did you get the motion? Can you repeat it?
Yep, it was to have Jane look at the right-of-way permit.
And/or Stafford Rosenbaum if you're unavailable.
Okay.
Yeah.
We got a motion in a second. This is, this is money, right? So do we have a roll call?
Not money, yeah.
I mean, it's going to cost.
Yeah, it is going to cost, so.
All right, so roll call please.
Come here.
Yes.
Schaefer, Weiss, Rose.
Yes.
Franklin.
Yes.
Whitmer.
Yes.
Gallagher, McNally.
Yes, all right, okay. All right, we'll look forward to your report from your vacation, Jane.
Thank you, Jane. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, my pleasure.
All right. I know we're not, we are not by any means done with this topic, but I think we are making progress. So I appreciate the, the comments and the.
I see the corporations, but somebody hasn't been following the plans.
Okay, let's move on. Item B underneath unfinished business, which is the only one that remains. Discussion and possible action regarding the six point three million dollar referendum question for the fire station.
Brian, come on up. Brian from Ellers is here. He has some information in the packet that you can, you know, he'll go over with you. What I included was the language from the last, this is not updated. This is the language that we used last year. So Brian will fill in some, some blanks and.
Yeah, thank you, Lisa, for the introduction. Thank you all for having me. If you remember from last year, we went through the fire district, you know, voted to move forward with these capital improvements. And per that establishment of that district, you know, you have a percentage, you know, based on your equalized value that you would be responsible for. And you also have to go to referendums. So basically, at the point at which they vote yes to move forward with the project, that's when this kicks in. So I've been asked to run those numbers again. You know, I think it's smart to just kind of keep the language as in, as is from last year because it actually was reviewed by your bond counsel. So you've kind of already gotten that advice. The only thing that truly would need to change is the dollar amount. So, you know, Lisa's provided that for you in your packet. The dollar amount though, if you go to the next page, would be that one point six four million dollar number. Based on the new percentage allocation that you have, which is twenty-five point zero one percent, I believe. In terms of what you'd be responsible for for project costs. And then we threw in cost of issuance that would be expected. And then, you know, these bonds are sold in five thousand dollar blocks. So you have a little bit of rounding as well to get to that five thousand dollar number. So we provided you, you know, some preliminary numbers on table two in terms of what the principal and interest might look like. If you were to sell these for the reason of going to table three. And you can see kind of the total tax impact. So obviously you have some existing general obligation debt and that's abated by some other sources of revenue. So we can kind of get to your current debt service levy. And then we can see when we look at the proposed debt columns, what this fire district financing would add. So specifically, this was similar to last year's numbers and kind of format, just updating explicitly what your portion of this bonding would be. So with that said, you know, towards the bottom of the page, we kind of get to the average annual tax impact. A hundred thousand dollar property of just under sixty dollars, so that's fifty-nine ninety-five. And then if you look at the tax rate for a hundred thousand dollars, is that forty-three eighty-two? Or if you did it on a thousand dollars, you know, point four three eight-two. So that anybody can kind of adjust that as necessary for their own values. So, you know, right now we did that on equalized value. You know, you kind of have to look at what the most recent assessment ratio would be to get that on assessed value. But it gives you, I think, a general idea in terms of that voter information, what the impact is on that. So kind of similar process to last year. We just kind of recommend you guys do a similar, you know, public information. I believe, you know, you did have the levy limit referendum as well, so you have some communications, you know, with your publications in the village there. But in a similar manner, making that, this information available. But with that said, you know, there's nothing special or new outside of the fire district did vote again to move this forward or at least try again. So everybody else, you know, the communities that feel they need to do so per that agreement are putting it on the referendum again. So I believe it's all the communities that didn't pass, to my knowledge. So beyond that, the last page is just your general obligation debt capacity, since you would be the issuer, you know, of this debt. It does go on your general obligation debt capacity for that as well. But you'd still have about four million dollars of additional capacity after this bonding. So any questions on that?
Not for you, I guess. So beside the equalized value, which I know changes year to year, the, the cost that the fire is, the fire commission is asking for is six point three million now, right? Not, instead of six point five. So it's gone down by two hundred thousand.
Yes.
I'm going to ask the same question I asked last year. What happens if we say no?
What are you going to want?
What happens if we say no? What if we do not put this on the ballot?
Well, we can kick the can down the road.
I'm, I'm, regardless, ignore that because I know what you're saying is everyone kicks the can down the road. I'm saying if Cambridge itself says no and everyone else says yes, what happens to us? What will, if, if that even came up in your closed session at the fire commission, if we say no, what will they do?
Well, first of all, if it was in closed session, I wouldn't be able to.
That's true, all right. So you're right. But in your opinion, what would?
If one municipality does not, my understanding is in looking at that agreement, this is going back to nineteen fifty-one. If you vote it down, if it doesn't go along, then it doesn't go. It takes all five of them. So any one of the, the five municipalities, whether it's Rockdale or Lake Mills, which is not going to happen. Or Cambridge, Christiana, or Oakland, then it wouldn't. It would take all five. Now, if they were to decide, and this is just supposition, so I better be really careful. Because you're getting into, do you stay in this, you know, this intergovernmental agreement between these other parties? And for us, if. And for us, if we are gonna get out, we have to give them at least one full year. So we would have already had to have done that. So we're in it right now for, for all of this year. And if we make a decision, we're in it for, for next year. Then you can get out. Where this gets really interesting, and I raised this as a question already. Town of Oakland's got a big development that they are looking at, and it's on Highway 18. I forget the intersection right there.
A.
J. And that is...
A.
Or A, that is a big development. That's not, that hasn't happened yet, and it's going to affect their equalized value dramatically. You have this, and it's an agreement that you have at the time that you sign it. Well, if we have our equalized value, and now they've got a big development taking place, that's not covered. We are still then gonna be stuck with our portion as it relates to the year that we took out this debt.
You make an interesting point, because that then makes me wonder, both of our large fellow commission members on either side have also solar developments coming. Christiana and Oakland both have solar coming and have potentially a windfall of money coming in from their respective counties.
I agree.
I don't think those go into equalized value necessarily, because they don't, based on their size, they don't apply to property taxes. But should they, because they're gonna have a windfall of money that they could be putting towards this that we do not have?
Right.
And are trapped in between, essentially.
Yes. And somebody raised the issue earlier. I mean, if, if you have a solar farm and it's right next door, there isn't any possibility of land that would be annexed by the village of Cambridge. You know, so where are the users, and where is the funding?
And we're not being reimbursed by the solar company for anything.
No, no, they haven't, they haven't said that.
Where Christiana is and also Oakland's gonna be reimbursed for.
So I don't know if I answered your questions.
Yeah, I mean, you got what I expected, so, I mean, no offense to you, I mean, it's just, I know where we're at in this. When do we have to make a decision by?
Language has to be to the county later this month to be on the...
Do you know what date? Is it, do we have the next board meeting, or is it, do we have to make the decision today?
I...
I thought it was the 25th.
I, the 25th is the date that was... And that's our next meeting.
So we need to make a decision.
So it would have to be today.
Okay.
Yes.
Just so I have, clear here, on this chart, so if your property is tax assessed at 200,000, you're paying $387 roughly per year for this, for 2022?
I thought it was enough. Oh, no.
That's for your current debt, so you wouldn't, you know, right now, we'd structure it, you know, to not have a payment, and that reason is because you've already filed your levy limit worksheet, so we didn't have this debt committed, so the state actually doesn't let you put in like, a prospective debt payment. So that 388 would be, yeah, for a $200,000 home, just for your current. And that's only debt service levy, that's not operations.
Okay. I think that, that next column, Chuck, tells you when it starts to apply.
Right, so that's the difference that it's adding to a 200,000.
The next one shows how much more will be on top of your existing property taxes.
Okay.
The final, yeah, the rightmost column, correct.
Okay.
And that's the 200,000, the bottom, I kind of did the 100,000, because that could be...
So at most, it would be for 200...
A little easier to calculate.
At, at most, over the period of time, it would be $111 additional for a $200,000.
Right, or if you look at the bottom, $1,500.
Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So that's what it does, over the life of the loan.
So frustrating.
You know, that basically, a voter saying yes would be, commit, and they, let's say they have an exact $200,000 bill that they would be saying, all right, this, the amount of taxes that adds over the life of the loan is $1,500.
Okay. I think it's important that we publish this information out to the residents, so they know exactly what they're gonna be paying before they vote. Can we put that out in the paper? So people, I mean, people see this number, 6.3, they're like, all right, they don't know what, how that affects them. I want them to know exactly how much they're gonna have to pay, so they have an, they make an informed decision for the referendum. We, this is the best way to put out that, that information. Because I wanna, I want the people to decide.
Yes.
That, I love the referendum, because instead of us, you know, kind of...
You know, on the scene, they turned it down last time, let me go through this.
Right, but maybe they didn't know how much...
The cost today is, you can add a million dollars to that 6.3, so it's 7.3 million, and we're gonna get 20, 20 to 25% less of that fire station.
I'm with you, Ted, I just want people to know what they're paying.
I will say to that point, Ted, that you just made, the other thing, and I said it earlier, in the next year, if, say, this doesn't pass again, and the fire commission has to go back, I think I would direct you, Mark, and any, or whoever is our representative at the time, to go ask Christiana in Oakland, because I'm assuming at that point, we will have a decision on at least Christiana, the Kaushan Solar Farm. I don't know, I haven't been tracking Oakland's, but, or where the Badger, their, their docket is.
And ask them for...
But ask them, and say, hey, you're gonna have a windfall, we want your, we're, we're gonna apply you to your new equalized value. It's gonna be higher, because you have a solar farm each of you, you have to pay more now. I'm just, I'm not saying that that's what we need to do, I'm just, I agree with Chuck. I don't think we can, to a resident's house, I don't think we necessarily should make the decision to not put it on the referendum. I wanted to ask the question to be devil's advocate, but I think that's not our, our place. I think we have an agreement that has, we are beholden to at this time, and we need to put it out there to the residents to make the decision. I'm more just saying, if they say no again, that's where I would go next, is say, hey, they said no, you have a windfall of cash, let's look to that.
Yeah, I have shared with the, the board, well, the commission, that, you know, they've already done this once, they're doing it now. This is, however this vote goes down, this, this thing is gonna be, this will be scorched earth for the next three to five years. I mean, I just don't see it coming back around in the short term. There's just too many other big moving pieces, and I think that's gonna factor into it.
Can I, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Town of Christiana owns the Pizza Pit property. Is this, well, isn't that gonna be part of this? They, they were gonna recoup their investment? So is this 6.3 including that?
Yes.
Okay. Now, how much are they recouping?
I think it was $240,000, Eric, for that property, I think that's what they paid for.
But Mark, I really think, you know, let's say it gets turned down, I think we should go forward as a commi, usually as a commission, should go ahead and, and get that Pizza Pit property put under commission's control, and, and get the, get the, get the site cleaned up and ready for building a, an addition at some point. Stop, that one's gotta go ahead and get taken care of.
Okay, I can bring that back.
Lisa, approximately, how much do you think this costs to put on a ballot? I know there's an additional fee.
There is an additional fee. The April ballots, we're already doing a lot of, charged a lot, because we have our local races on. So it's in addition to that. I don't know, it's, it's...
That's okay.
A couple hundred dollars, it's not a huge amount to have it on.
Okay.
If it were a standalone referendum.
Yeah, that's actually what I was getting at, there's a special...
Yeah. For the coworkers and so forth, but...
Okay.
I still want, I wanna get this information out there, I don't know the best way to do it, do the paper, I just, they need to know how this affects them before they vote. What do you think?
I work and said I'd do a mailing or something.
Well, I mean, our, I know, she's not here, but our paper, they, they do review sort of our notes. And I think it's in there, the assessment you did. So I think if we can just have that if she asks, or if we can just send it out to her, to Karen, to say, here is the average across these years, taking all those numbers, and say, here's the average per $200,000 home, and just say, for your info, as you're putting this out there for referendum article, so...
That would be great.
Dean's got a question.
Dean, I've got a, I, I, I'll give you the benefit of the, the question, but it's very short. Go ahead.
Oh, yeah, that's fine, that's fine. I would like to see potentially the actual numbers instead of last year's projected numbers on the Ellers report and...
This is the new, these are the new numbers.
Oh, just, okay, I just seen the last year's referendum.
No, the referendum question is from last year, the numbers are new numbers.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
Is that true enough?
It was very good.
Thank you.
I was confused too, Dean, if it helps.
And I put, the reason I put this in is that is the only direction I received from the commission. Put the same question out. So...
So I wanna make a motion, Mark.
Are we binding then, or not?
To go forward with the...
It is not a binding, it's an advisory.
$6.3 million referendum for the fire station. And that's a, is that a binding referendum, did you say, or?
No, it's an advisory.
Just an advisory referendum that the public is gonna...
Second.
All right, so we got a motion, a second, further discussion, questions? Okay, all those in favor of putting this advisory, non-binding resolution?
Referendum.
Referendum.
Referendum question, referendum. On the, the spring ballot, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, it has been approved. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to see the, the actual numbers.
I'll try to...
That's in there.
Just, I, I, I'm listening to what you're saying, Chuck, and I'll see what I can do, and it may even have to be a letter to the paper.
Yeah.
Just sort of a summary.
Yes.
Because when you look at the, the paper, when they come in and they do these meetings, jeez, they cover everything and anything, and it's, it's long, and it's, for some people, they just may wanna say, what's the, what's the skinny on it?
Just so they have an idea of what they're paying for.
I have my template, Chuck.
If it's that.
Use the new Ellers numbers.
Okay, yeah, that'd be good.
Question for you, Mark. I, I don't know, I know it's not particularly on the agenda, but it's in there. Decorum, can I ask you about the fire commission meeting that happened? I know Bob Saleoff retired.
Yes.
And is there any other updates from that, or just comments about where we're going? Now that I heard our EMS, I mean, you think you, you alluded to it at our last meeting, that they, not only did Bob retire, but we lost several EMS members. Have we recouped some of those members, is that up to, I don't, I feel like I'm breaching things, but it, the notes were in there, so I felt like I can ask the question, so...
My understanding that they're, they have hired people.
Okay.
Okay, because we're getting into about two or three things here. Bob Saleoff did retire. He, his employment ceased, but he is available to do consulting work for the first three months of 2022. They have a new assistant EMS director, his name is Paul Blount.
Saw that.
And he is now interim.
Yep.
He's not official yet, but he is, he's a good guy. You know, I think he is, he's gonna be able to kind of get this thing...
Maybe.
You know, because the EMS, they're having some problems. They, they lost, I wanna say, I know they lost four of the techs.
You said it was four of the six, right?
Yeah, yeah, and so they hired three, and they were looking at one more. I don't know, I'll know later this week, because I'll be able to ask, because there's another meeting scheduled.
Okay.
And then I'll, I can get a staffing update and share that with you.
Thank you.
All right.
All right.
Does that answer it? Anybody else got anything? Okay, all right, and I'll, I'll stay in touch with your idea.
Thanks, Mark.
Okay.
As long as we have been calling Cottage Grove every other day, it's gonna be fine.
Well, we, we should be able to, you know, rely upon our own, but, you know, I get it.
Can I ask about the union contract? You don't have to answer it, I just...
I'm not going to, because...
That's okay, I'm okay with that word.
That's kind of what we're going into, so I'm gonna hold on. Chris, why not?
What's the fire commission paying the Deer Grove folks per day for EMS services?
I don't know what the contract, or what they did while we were short on folks.
Fire commission doesn't know that?
They may know, I, I don't know it.
You're our representative.
Yeah, that's true. There's a lot of numbers on there, Chris, that I don't know.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I mean, I can find it out, but I, I just don't have it right here in front of me.
I sort of know, but I'm not gonna say.
Okay. All right. I'm gonna stop there, correspondence?
Wait, subcommittee, attorney. D isn't on.
Oh, oh, yes, yes, I struck this, I'm sorry, I, I didn't mean to do that. Yes, creating a subcommittee to review responses to the attorney, RFP.
Yep, so we did receive four responses. In the RFP, we did say a subcommittee would review and give recommendations to the board, call in if there were questions. I would suggest a subcommittee of Mark, if you were willing, Wyatt as Chair of Police and, you know, our Police and Fire Commission, and Chris as Chair of Personnel, the three of you to review those we can meet before the next board meeting, to then have a recommendation to the board.
Sure, yeah, I'm, I'm fun with being on it. Yeah, is, you have the RFP, like, you have the responses, right?
Yes.
Yeah, if you can just send them this week, I'd love to serve them now.
And I have some hard copies, I could give both of you hard copies today.
Great, I'm fun being on that, yeah.
All right.
So we just need a motion, right?
Yeah, set up a subcommittee.
I'll make a motion to stand up a subcommittee to review the outstanding attorney RFPs that would include Mark as chair, myself, and then Chris, Schaefer, Weiss, as the three members of the subcommittee. Is that all you need, right, three?
Mm-hmm, yep.
Well, second.
Okay, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, that carries.
And we'll meet before the 25th, so we can just have that on the agenda to just adopt, pick some.
Yep.
Perfect.
Okay. Correspondence, number 10 on the agenda? Anything?
Yep, I just had the fire commission information that had been provided.
All right. We've got a number of meetings that are coming up. Let's see, tomorrow night's library board, the 18th is Water and Sewer, 25th Village Board, February 8th, Joint Law Enforcement Village Board, again, on the 8th. The 14th, Valentine's Day Plan Commission, the 15th, Water and Sewer, Public Works and Economic Development to be determined. Okay. Questions, referrals to staff for future agenda items?
I'd like to ask just the, I was reading the notes, and I should have been clear on this when we were reviewing the consent agenda, but I got confused on the agenda items. I'd like to just better understand the discussion that happened at Water and Sewer around why Dancing Goat would have to do something different than standard for effluent outmeter? I just, it just seemed odd that there was a discussion around they would be different than the, the standard rate, because I know I asked myself for an outmeter, because I do a lot of watering in my garden, and I heard there's a standard meter, there's a standard rate, why is Dancing Goat different than that?
Because, well, it depends if they truck the water in, and I guess that's one of the bigger things. But they'd also like to know how much water's going down to the water treatment plant.
I understand that, I guess I'm just wondering, in the notes, it was phrased almost as if they would be a special case. But my understanding is in our ordinance and our standards, we have standards around what we would charge someone for sewer rates, and we can measure that with a standard meter, but we're looking for a special meter for them.
No.
No, you can't.
Our engineers are looking into what type of meter, how it would be metered.
Is it just because of volume?
The deduct, the deduct meter is different. That's measuring the water, not sewer. So an effluent meter is measuring the, what's going out.
I guess when I called Vicki years ago, when I first moved to Cambridge, because I was also very confused by my water being so expensive, I asked, what's the option? She said, there's a standard meter, it's this cost, you can purchase it, and it is the outmeter, it's the sewer meter.
No, it's not, it's a deduct meter. So it's measuring how much water is going to your outside spigots, and that's being deducted.
Okay. That was my own confusion.
You can't, you can't put a meter on a six-inch pipe and have it dribble through that six-inch pipe. It's not gonna read it.
So the engineers are looking at what would be the best option and how...
Then I guess I would just ask for the next Village Board meeting to have an update on that.
We will, we're gonna be talking about that next, next week. Next week.
Yeah, Water and Sewer. I know it's next week. I just wanna keep hearing about it here at the board, so.
And there was discussion of them paying for it, if it goes through, there's that meter, so wouldn't be a bill discussed.
Other items? Lisa, would would you be able to have a discussion about the At Home Again, what's going on with that area, or is that too soon? Our obligations for the
I am scheduled to have a meeting with At Home Again later this month.
Okay.
I don't know the exact date, if it is before or after our meeting.
Okay.
But I do have a meeting scheduled with them.
I just know that they had some concerns, so
Yeah. Yep.
If we're allowed to talk about them, then
Yeah.
Then I'd like to see it on the agenda, if we can.
Yeah.
I'd like to see them.
I've got a couple of things here. One is that I do have a fire and EMS meeting, and we are gonna be talking about PR for this referendum, and they wanna talk about the director position terms, and then Pizza Pit property. I just don't know how much we're gonna get into that, because some of it's gonna be dependent upon the referendum, but it is on the agenda. That's for this week on Thursday. Something that I'd like to to just kind of, Lisa, to to put it with you, because there is an increase here in the the number of counts with this omni variant and COVID, and we've got two members here not tonight. Can we at least have as a back, I don't wanna use it if we don't, but to go back to to a Zoom if we need to?
We do still have our agreement with free conference calls.
Yeah.
We could look at Zoom, we could do something different.
I mean, I'm all for meeting in person. I think that these are much better. I don't like the stuff.
Well, neither.
It's just, you don't know what you're you're getting into. But I also know that we're at the highest count, so we may be in the the thick of it here for the next month or so.
Mm-hmm.
And we'll, we'll have to decide, but just to be aware of that. Okay.
I have two other things. These are completely unrelated, and hopefully on a happier note. But one is, I've just been thinking about this because of the the presentation earlier around the Travel Wisconsin and some of the great PR there. Should we, I'd like to review our website at some point, and mostly around search engine hits, because I feel like you search Cambridge, and you don't hit our website, you hit many other websites, including an old one that doesn't do anything and isn't great, and some other things, and I'd love to fix that.
Somebody is currently looking at that to see if we can correct that, where we are hitting hits. I also do have some quotes from two companies on new websites.
Right.
I just haven't been able to to dig into them.
Yeah, future agenda item. I just, I just think it would be great to look at that, and certainly would be willing to weigh in some thoughts. I've
Yeah.
done web development before. It's been a couple of years, but not to say I'm offering myself up to develop our website.
Yeah.
But I would be willing to review things and help out in some ways. And then the second one is, also on that same point, we have a new boutique hotel coming in. Should we help support them anyway in terms of promoting beyond the Travel Wisconsin, and sort of, I don't know, if we're thinking of doing something, or if they want to do something themselves, I just, I don't know, we have some new businesses coming in with the new coffee shop, doing a soft opening on the 20th, the Boutique Hotel. I'd love to promote our local businesses in some way as the board, or help support them, or ask them if they want help.
You know, I, that's a great one. We not only have the new hotel, but then we have a B and B that just was purchased, and they're gonna resume operations. In fact, I sent the card to them.
The one on Main, on Main Street?
Yeah.
Okay.
And it's, it's just, we've got some good economic, you know, stuff that's happening. I've talked with Tony. I don't know if there's a lot at this point that he's looking for. It's just, you know, getting it finished, and he was doing the sheet rocking with his guys.
I'm just wondering, you have to offer these businesses any help they, because we don't have a Chamber of Commerce right now. I know we've got an economic development committee, but offering support, especially because I know, being a tour, like a tourist destination, this is like the hardest months to start a business, I feel like, because it's cold, people don't wanna go, especially these past two weeks have been miserable. I have not made my usual walk downtown, because it's been so cold.
Well, we've got the new coffee shop going in at Galleria 214.
Exactly. Yeah. So.
And and she's, I've met with her, and, because there's two owners, and she's really nice. I mean, she used to work out at, I think she worked out at The Goat.
Winery. She worked at the winery.
Oh, the winery? Okay.
I think so. Maybe she works
She was out there. I I don't remember which one, but she's a real nice lady from Fort Acorn or someplace. So we've got good things that are happening.
What is existing business?
I agree. I was gonna add to that, too.
[laughing]
And obviously, like, the Travel Wisconsin stuff, I think, has been really awesome, and love to see sort of repping Dancing Goat and others in that, so I'd love to have our
That's a good idea. Since we don't have a chain rep, it's a nice village if we do something like that. Welcome.
Yes. Thank you. I'll have to have somebody go around and knock on doors, see if there's anybody up for the task. All righty. Any other items for future?
Real quick, Lisa, can we reach out to Oakland about Blue Jay Way, the joint subcommittee? Maybe set some up for February?
Okay.
Or is it?
Hold off, because I've been working on that one as well, and there's, there's, their group is meeting, and then what they're going to do is go back to their own board and kind of have what they think they will, they will go along with.
Okay.
So I don't know if we have to do anything just yet. But they are making progress.
Do you wanna offer that, for them, if they wanna meet with us, because we are the, you know, Cambridge version of the subcommittee?
Guys, I was already
Before Wyatt's gone?